Good evening, everybody. We have our first 5:30 meeting for our summer agenda. Agenda review session for Wednesday, June 1st, 2016. We have ordinances on second reading. 601, ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the City of New Brunswick Title III Revenue and Finance Chapter 3.28 Fee Schedule. Section 3.28, 120 Parks and Recreation Fees. Amended Recreation Permit Fees. Ordinances for discussion on first reading. 601, pull that as unnecessary as requested by engineers. 602, ordinance to grant the canopy easement within the Plum Street Right of Way to Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital with the 10 Plum Street Canopy Project. Resolutions. 601, approve agenda amendment. 602, approve payroll. 603, authorize refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. 604, approve ABC liquor license renewals, 2016 through 2017. 605, approve transfer of taxi license number 36 from Camille E., or Aied, I'm sorry, 100% to the following to Sadakuchi Ashmala, 50% owner, to Pedro A. Jimenez, 50% owner. 606, set hearing date relative to continuation, termination of conditions on ABC license for Platinum Lounge LLC trading as Pearl and Glow liquor license number 1214-33079008. The date is June 15, 2016. For Kelly's Corner Incorporated trading as Kelly's Corner liquor license number 1214-33028006. Date is June 15, 2016. For LaFamosa Incorporated trading as LaFamosa liquor license number 1214-33045003. The date is June 15. For Perserv, my saying that right?
Persid.
Persid, sorry. Persid Incorporated trading as Mia Tiara Bar liquor license number 1214-33047005. The date is July 20, 2016. For DeGala Cafe and Restaurant Incorporated trading as DeGala Cafe and Restaurant liquor license number 1214-33007003. That date is July 20, 2016. 607, approve amendment of resolution R.051647. Change of hearing date. Approve resolution setting a hearing date for ABC charges for Livingston Liquors to Elizabeth Street liquor license number 1214-44046005. Hearing date is June 15, 2016. 608, approve amendment of resolution R.051648. The reason for change of hearing date. Approve resolution setting a hearing date for ABC charges for Cancun Bar, 120 French Street liquor license number 1214-33083007. The hearing date is June 15, 2016. 609, approve amendment of resolution R.051649. Change of hearing date. Approve resolution setting a hearing date for ABC charges. Kaz Mass Incorporated trading as JJ Adams, 732 Lounge, 186 Havilton Street liquor license number 1214-33034003. Hearing date, 215, 2016. 610, approve off-credit for Apple 5050 at the High ABC 2 Oldman Streets. The St. Peter's Foundation. Date is September 30, 2016. 611, approve amendment of resolution R.021651 to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $1,001,333 to benefit to Longmont. For Police Director Anthony Caputo in the matter of Steve Middleton versus City of Brunswick from $12,285 to $13,004,135. 612, authorize lease of copy machines for the Police Department Juvenile and Bureau, I'm sorry, Juvenile Aid Bureau. For Rico USA Incorporated for one Rico model 2554 SP digital copier system. Not to exceed 80, 92 per month commencing July 1st, 2016, and ending July, and June 3rd, 2020. 48-month contract, state contract number 40467G2075, copiers, maintenance, and supplies. 613, authorized participation in cooperative purchasing program division of parks and shade trees with National Joint Powers Alliance. 614, authorized purchase by Police Department under state contract A83921-T0109, radio communication equipment and accessories for Microstrategies Incorporated for service plus maintenance agreement for network servers, VM servers, and connectivity equipment. Terms 12-month period commencing April 1, 2016, and ending March 31, 2017. Not to exceed $10,722, not pro-thunk. 615, authorized purchase by Police Department under state contract A83921-T0109, radio communication equipment and accessories for Microstrategies Incorporated. Maintenance agreement for NICE or Nice Recording Systems 12-month period commencing June 21, 2016, and ending June 20, 2017. Not to exceed $4,0965. 616, approve authorization to advertise for Water Main Valve Exercising Program. Specification number 532-16W. 617, approve amendment of resolution R.071559 to extend award contract for one additional year, 12-month period commencing July 1, 2016, and ending June 30, 2017. With Business and Governmental Insurance Agency for insurance brokerage services, traditional indemnity. 618, approve amendment of resolution R.031607, reason to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $1,0343 to benefit to Longmont. For Police Director Anthony Caputo in the matter of Archer Anderson versus Anthony Caputo for $14,322,50 to $15,665,50. 619, approve amendment of resolution R.091527, to extend award contract for one additional year, 12-month period commencing July 1, 2016, and ending June 30, 2017. With Public Synergies Group LLC for insurance brokerage services, HMO. 620, approve award contract with ATC who serves as LLC for asbestos safety control monitoring for, for the warning, for the warning utility. Specification number 52216RFB. Not to exceed $19,821, fair and open. 621, approve amendment of resolution R.051660. Reason to change the date to add a rain date. Approve request for use of city property requested by Roosevelt Elementary School, the Brussels Board of Education at the Youth Sports Complex for Roosevelt Elementary School Field Day. The date Friday, June 17, 2016. Rain date Monday, June 20, 2016. Time is 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM. 622, approve of resolution R.051618, reason to change park for September 18, 2016 to George Kilmer Park. Approve request for use of city property requested by New Brunswick Cultural Center. For fifth annual Hub City Sounds Music and Concert Series. Location Boyd Park Saturday, August 13, 2016. Asian Indian Festival. Location George Kilmer Park Sunday, September 18, 2016. Karazan Festival. Time 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. 623, approve request receipt for street closing. Requested by Rutgers RWJMS, Eric Reid Chandler Health Center. Lawrence Street between Hillston Street and George Street. Community Health Fair, Fair Day in celebration of National Health Week. The date is Friday, August 12, 2016. Time is 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Police active duty. 624, approve amendment of resolution R.051613, reason to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $1,009,1229. This is the Palau Law Firm LLC Special Counsel City of Brunswick for its park construction from 71-697-31 to 73-609-60. 625, approve request for use of city property requested by Woodrow Wilson School, the Brussels Board of Education. Location Murphy Park. The Woodrow Wilson School Field Day. Date Thursday, June 9, 2016. Rain date Wednesday, June 15, 2016. Time 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. 626, approve of amendment of resolution R.051662. Reason to change the rain date to Tuesday to June 14, 2016. Approve request for use of city property requested by Livingston Elementary School, the Brussels Board of Education. Location Youth Sports Complex. Baseball and soccer fields, lower field, low upper fields for Livingston Elementary School Field Day. The date is Friday, June 10, 2016. The rain date Tuesday, June 14, 2016. Time is 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. 627, approve request for use of city property requested by Women Aware Incorporated. Location is Minutet Square Park for Candlelight Vigil to increase awareness about domestic violence. The date is Thursday, October 6, 2016. Time 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. 628, approve request for street closing. Requested by Rutgers Department of Major Events and Programs. Location College Avenue between Barlow and Senior Streets. For 9th Annual Home Company Charity Bed Race. The date Thursday, October 13, 2016. Time 7:00 PM to 11:30 PM. Police active duty. 629, approve request for use of city property requested by the Amy Feyman Bayard Foundation for Cancer Prevention. Location Doolittle Park Jogging Bar. For eighth annual Walk for Diane to benefit the Amy Foundation. Date Sunday, October 23, 2016. Time 6:30 AM to 1:30 PM. 630, approve amendment of resolution R.021669, reason to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $2,462,50 to Anthony Vignolo Incorporated of Forest, Vignolo, Vignolo, Highland Stall. Special Counsel for Board of Ethics Hearing. Special, I'm, I'm sorry, from 9,717,42 to 12,179,92. 631, approve request for street closing. Use of city property requested by Veterans Alliance of Rhode Island Valley Incorporated. Location Longmont Street, George Street, Livingston Avenue, Minutet Square Park from Island Park, New Brunswick. Park location Minutet Square for a parade to honor the veterans of foreign wars, foreign wars. Date Friday, November 11, 2016. The street closed by 10:30 AM to 2:30 PM. 632, approve request for use of city property requested by Community Baptist Church of Somerset. Location Sidewalk in front of train station to distribution of religious literature and clothing for needy homeless. The date is Saturday, June 4, 2016. Durand Day is Saturday, July 2, 2016. Time is 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. 633, approve request for use of city property. Location four parking spaces near the front of City Law and Bear Street requested by Walk Blousdine, Bike Blousdine, and NJSLAR Youth Student Landscape Architecture Club. The fifth annual International Parking Day in New Brunswick, 2016. Parkland. Praise Dimitri, Blaze, Play, Rex, and Socialize. The date is Friday, September 16, 2016. The rain date is Friday, October 7, 2016. Time is 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. 634, approve award grant for rehabilitation home improvements. One grant for Carmella Noth or Naft. 33 Wilcox Road not to exceed $32,350. 635, approve amendment of resolution R.021611. Reason to amend resolution to reflect the City of New Brunswick's match along with the project total. Authorized application, acceptance, and execution of grant agreements for 2016. For 2016 New Brunswick Safety and Secure Community Grant Application, grant number P669916, the amount is $60,000. 636, authorization for execution of First Amendment to leasing agreement between City of New Brunswick and New York SNMSA Limits Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless dating August 28, 2006. Authorize installation of generator at the Bartlett Whitehall Firehouse, number five. 637, approve authorization to advertise for 2016 traffic registration. Specification number 904-16. 638, authorize refund of uniform construction code fee to Fernando Acevedo, 209 Rutgers Street, amount 166. 639, authorize Mayor Cindy Perkins to secure site access agreement with Jacobs Engineering Group Incorporated on behalf of New Jersey Transit for access to 400 Jersey Avenue, Block 242, Lot 10.03. 640, approve relaxation of City of New York ordinance of road closure requested by Public Service Electric and Gas Company. Permanent asphalt repairs Johnson Drive Thursday, June 2, 2016, and Friday, June 3, 2016. Time 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM. 641, approve amendment of resolution R.111518, change order number one. With Dulane Contract Incorporated for Library Pump Station approved. Specification number 893-15, the amount is $4,058,70. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. So we got them? That's it? Okay, uh, will the clerk please form the roll?
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Here. Please be advised if the notice requires of the Open Public Meetings Act have been complied with and satisfied, you have the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public readings of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick as you file to City Clerk. And the place on appropriate both and more in the lobby of City Law and the Brunswick of New Jersey and has been transmitted to the official newspaper of the City of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Tribune. Please stand for the clerk to move.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence for our men and women serving in our armed forces. For all our men and women in our armed forces who lost their lives in battle. We have minutes for April 20, 2016. I'm going to motion on the minutes.
Motion.
No call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Attorney, the public hearings?
All three of those matters, Council President, have been carried as a result of the adjournment request by the attorneys representing the various licensees. Consent agenda contains investigations carrying the date to the 15th of June.
And you inform them that we need to get the, out of the business?
I have.
And give it them a little time to get their stuff together?
Just so that they can do their due diligence and advise their clients according to their interest of fairness. But I did tell them that the council was interested in moving these matters to the 15th meeting.
Thank you, sir. We have ordinances on second reading. 601, ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the City of New Brunswick Title III Revenue and Finance Chapter 3.28 Fee Schedule. Section 3.28, 120 Parks and Recreation Fees. Amended Recreation Permit Fees. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? Anybody from the public on this ordinance? See you then.
Luther, second.
No call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. Ordinances for discussion first reading. 601 has been pulled. 602, ordinance to grant the canopy easement within the Plum Street Right of Way to Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital with the 10 Plum Street Canopy Project.
Will the ordinance setting that June 15 at 5:30 for public hearing same date to be advertised?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We have resolutions. We have resolutions 601 to 641. Would anybody from the public like to comment on any particular resolutions? Anybody from the public? Yes, sir, sir. Further?
Good evening. Charles Cradill from New Brunswick. I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today, community newspaper. You all know. The tip me a little hoarse tonight. I'm sure that is to the disappointment of the council. The BGIA contract, can you tell me why?
What number is it?
Uh, 617 is renewal of the previous contract. Can you tell me, um, when is the city going to do bidding for this service?
Uh, insurance broker services? Chris and Lott?
We do bidding every two years. Uh, and in fact, the BGIA was awarded this contract back in June of 2015. The bid specs allow the city to renew for a year if it chooses to. We think it's advisable to do that. For the fee that is, um, the fee that BGIA receives from Aetna at $75,000 against a $10 million Aetna program, uh, their fee is less than 1%. They help us with renewal. They help us going into the marketplace and gathering other quotations. They solve disputes between us and Aetna. They solve disputes between our employees, the insured, and the doctors. So, again, I'm recommending that the, their agreement be extended another 12 months.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. And, uh, so next year there will be bidding?
There will be a, uh, we will do an RFP for those services, yes. As will be the case with the second similar resolution on the agenda with corporate synergies.
Yeah, I wanted to ask you about that. It says here Public Synergies Group. Can you tell me what services do they provide beyond BGIA? And is this the first time the city's doing business with them?
No, it's not. We've done business with them for years. They broker the Cigna medical insurance program that we have here for our employees. The Cigna piece is an HMO. The Aetna piece is a traditional indemnity program that's self-insured by the city. But, um, corporate synergies has been with us for a number of years. Again, the same thing held true. They were the low proposer with an RFP back in June of 2015, and I'm recommending that their agreement be extended another 12 months. Their fee is $32,000, as you see, against a, um, a total cost of roughly $3 million.
Thank you for your thorough answer. Can I just, can you clarify, what is the name of the company that says on the agenda Public Synergies Group? Is it Corporate Synergies or?
I think you meant to say public. Did you just say?
I don't know. I see what Mr. Cradill's getting at. Corporate, it's referred to as corporate synergies and public synergies. I will get you an answer before the end of the meeting.
Thank you. So, uh, but it is the same company?
It is, it is the same company. I'm not sure with the, with the typos hold up, but we'll look at it.
Thank you. Uh, the next one I want to ask about is the asbestos safety control monitoring at the water utility. Can you please ask the water director to enlighten us what, uh, what this project is about?
Yes, sir. Director Castle? Um, this is a RFP that went out for a monitoring group to monitor the air during some asbestos removal projects that we have coming up. During the course of inspections, deep down in the treatment plant, we found some asbestos related to an old boiler that has been out of service for many years in regards to that. And so, since we're a 24-hour day operation, uh, we need to have a monitoring group in there while we're working at the same time to ensure air quality stays, you know, you know, perfect for the guys who work with it.
Right. And so, can you tell me did anybody else fit for this contract? Or was there only one bid?
We had about six, and it's, it wasn't a bid. It was a request with proposals. Um, ATC is a group that I'm familiar with and our engineer is very familiar with, and I believe they were second load, close by.
Okay. And, um, what's the long-term plan for the asbestos there? Is, uh, I mean, this is just monitoring for now. What's, uh, is there a timeframe on when the asbestos might be removed or when it's going to?
We have, we have a plan for this year to have it in, so we, we hope to have the work done prior to end of the year.
Thank you very much. Do want to make note of a couple good events. The Hub City Sounds, Resolution 22, and the Candlelight Vigil, number 27. They're both, uh, good things that the council should speak about during your meetings to promote to the public. Um, the, uh, Hub City Sounds is Saturday, August 13. And that is in Boyd Park, 11 to 6. And then it's again in September, the Core Zone Festival, September 18, 11 to 6. And then the Candlelight Vigil to increase awareness about domestic violence is 5 to 9 PM on October 6. And, uh, gosh, I have to ask about Resolution 30. The, uh, payment for the, it says here, the special counsel for the Board of Ethics Hearing. I've been asking forever to get a straight answer on this. Is Mr. Vignolo the special counsel for the Board of Ethics? Or is he the regular Ethics Board Attorney? I've gotten conflicting answers.
Mr. Shami?
He is the, he is the counsel for the Board of Ethics as we speak. He is their attorney. I suppose we call it special counsel because we have used that term in the past with board appointments, but he's technically the board attorney as we speak, and he's handling matters that come before the Ethics Board currently.
Thank you.
The board has appointed him at the beginning of the year, and he serves in that capacity at their pleasure.
Thank you.
Okay. So, what's so special about, I guess?
Well, I think he just said, Mr. Cradill, that the term special is just a word they use. He's just the attorney for the board, we could just say. I don't think, not that there's something special about him. I'm sure his people think that there is, but I believe that it's just a term that they use or have used in the past. But he's just a board attorney, like Mr. Shami is the board attorney here, or like, you know, he's the attorney for the Ethics Board.
Okay. Well, respectfully, I will urge you to change that and do what you can to change that because his track record has not been good, and that's, you know, playing out now in the Office of Administrative Law, and it's costing taxpayers money. I think of all the attorneys in New Jersey, you've got to be able to find somebody who's better for that particular job, just given the simple, you know, what we've been through so far. And that's just my, you know, hopefully a constructive suggestion.
Thank you for that suggestion.
Uh, the next one I want to ask about is 32, and I think this is another, seems like a great event. Community Baptist Church of Somerset is going to distribute religious literature and clothing to the needy and homeless. And that is June the 4th from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And I just want to remind the council, I think it's ironic and sad that if a homeless person at the train station, or a needy person at the train station asks someone for, you know, money, food, uh, or favor, if they ask a stranger for those things, they would be criminals under your ordinance. They would be violating the city laws. And that is just wrong. That is an unconstitutional ordinance, and the city should revisit it before it's challenged. You've lost on this before. It's, it's, it's sad that that's the law in our city, and I'm not, not proud of that. And then, um, last one I need to ask about is 39, the agreement for access to 400 Jersey Avenue, which I guess is the DPW, uh, yard, uh, facility. Can you tell me why NJ Transit needs access to it? Are they, is there a project adjacent to it?
I believe NJ Transit, the rail system has a yard in the back. If you take the road by the gas pumps and go back there, they have a, they have a yard set up there with offices and construction trailers where they work on the Amtrak Road and the rail system. Am I right or wrong? Yes, Mr. Cradill?
Well, you're right in that description, excuse me. But specific to this agreement, they want to do geotechnical sampling as part of the county yard project. So they're going to do soil samples to determine the strength of the soils for potential other construction work back there.
Okay, so it's for the county yard project. That's what it's called. Right for, okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cradill.
Mr. Egan, if I could just give you the answer. Corporate Synergies Group LLC changed their name in September of 2015 to Public Synergies Group LLC. So their, um, the resolution should be amended to reflect that.
Well, actually, it is, it has been amended. And the second amendment has this, I understand, and then down in the bottom, there's another whereas. So it all comes together in the one resolution.
So we look legally, we're your father?
I believe we're fine.
Thank you.
But I understand Mr. Lott is supportive.
Okay. Would anybody else like to comment on any of the particular resolutions this evening? Anybody on the resolutions? Seeing nobody.
There is a resolution.
Thanks, sir.
No call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes, standing on the left.
So noted. Councilmember Garladi?
Yes, standing on 6:30.
So noted. Council President Egan?
Yes. Now move to the public portion of the meeting. Anybody would like to come and address the council? We step right up. Name and address. Five minutes.
Aye, yes.
Yes, the Egan.
More. Wow, I have to say, I realize the, uh, the city council started off so good, but wow, tables have turned. I wonder what's going on now? Due to where, uh, let's start off with the traffic signal on Joyce, Joyce Comer in Delawarean. It's been over almost five months. Has not been repaired yet?
I'm sorry. We were saying we started off good, but now we're not doing good.
Oh, when I get, when I get through my list, next, for showing my proof, you'll understand.
All right. Well, listen, let's make a list here. Does everybody have their pens out so we can rectify these problems, please? So the traffic light is off, what's their shooting address?
That's Joyce Comer Avenue in Delawarean. That's where the flashes, where you press it and it signals cars to let someone wants someone wants to come across the street.
Okay. Thank you very much. What else, man?
Then the other one I didn't read, two that I didn't report, but that's why I'd like the city council to have someone come fix the walkway, Lee Avenue and Delavan Street. That's between Red Shaw and Livingston. You have a huge, deep pothole in the walkway. So, if someone can take care of that, please.
Who's property? Is it the Board of Ed's property?
No, that's the city.
The city's property?
Lee Avenue. As you're crossing Lee Avenue, yes. That's where Seem and Charlie.
Now, you realize we have a whole city to work here, you know? We're going to get to these problems when we can get to them. So, nothing happens overnight.
Oh, no, I understand that.
We're going to get to them. It's a whole city. I don't want to see that.
I understand that, but like I said, five months?
Five point five square miles we're covering here. So, we're going to get to all those things. So, it's not like we're not getting there, but we've got other places to go to.
Well, I know that's something simple, but like I said, far as the swings.
It's a lot of work.
No, I'm talking, I said a pothole. That's all you just have to do is what, put them...
I always say it was in the sidewalk.
The walkway.
Oh, the walkway, okay. All right. What else you have?
Okay, that's why I would like to ask the captain. I know you get charged for a hit-and-run as you're driving a car, but there was a situation on Delavan Street. The main purpose, the reason why I asked you to close Delavan Street off because you have the kids walking in the middle of the street to cross from one side. But that was where Friday, right after school, we had a situation. That was where a little girl, she was hit. That was actually where she was crossing this, over past Delavan. That was a boy where he was riding a bicycle. That was where he crashed and he flipped over and dragged the girl where she had scraped her whole entire back and a head injury. And like I said, wow, this is just from a bicycle. And like I said, not to use it to prove my point, but wow, the gentleman, he left the scene. The police caught him, they seen him, and they just let him go. So, how is he not being charged for a hit-and-run?
And he hit him with a bicycle?
Yes. And like I said, did damage. And like I said, the police department seen him and just let him go.
Captain, I'm not familiar with the incident, but I will get to it and I'll report back to this board at 15.
Well, it's on the record. That's where actually the New Brunswick, their security guards, where they chased the gentleman around the block. It was about six security guards where they chased him around the block. And then when the police car got there, they just let him go. The girl, she had to be taken to the hospital to be treated for a head injury. Then like I said, she had scrapes on her back because she was dragged. So, if you please let me know, okay, when you can do the report, will he be charged for a hit-and-run?
Well, I'll also get to that when any of the details.
Well, like I said, it's on video. And then like I said, the Board of Education, they have it on video and there are the witnesses also.
Can I just remind you of that, education? Can someone be charged for a hit-and-run on a bicycle? I don't know that answer. I just ask too much though.
Depending on where the, if the bicycle was in the roadway traveling, bicycles are supposed to travel the same way the cars are, motor vehicle was, can be applied to bicycles. I'd have to see exactly what the circumstances are here and what it might have been. Is this why you're saying this happened on the 27th?
That was Friday, yes.
What time approximately was that?
Like I said, the security guards are the witness where they chased him around the block.
Did you know approximately what time?
Oh, that was what, maybe about 3:25? 3:25, yes. You can ask the principal and all where. It was all radioed.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, this is a huge situation. Been about three or four months and I've been asking you about Lee Avenue due to where too much speeding going on. Let me help you remember.
Ask you, ask for speed bumps or something like that?
And then...
You said that all the speed bumps are, you have to start off by going to the traffic commission?
Oh, okay, okay.
For speed bumps?
Okay, not even just that. That was about a month ago where I even asked you, just something simple. You put the orange stick there, I'm not sure what you call them, where I asked you what no parking on corners due to where it's an extreme blind zone.
You're not allowed to park on corners. It's one of the five first questions on your driving test.
But yes, oh my, in any other areas, where you have yellow paint, you have no parking to corner, you have the things there so nobody can park.
Those things are there?
I gave you a picture of every corner from Libbitt, Lee and Howard Street going all the way Lee until Dead End, where I mentioned to you that there is not a speed limit sign, no parking to corner sign, no sign, watch out for our children.
Do you want to say exact location more detail?
That's between Lee, from Lee Avenue and Howard Street going up all the way to Lee, where you do not have the lines for a walkway. It's like, wow, nobody lives in this area.
Mr. Lawton, have you said anything?
Yeah, I did. Two weeks ago, I sent a copy of the traffic commission minutes to Ms. Moore. Regrettably, the letter did not get through, got returned to me. I just handed it to her this evening. She may not have had a chance to read it yet. But the engineering department has recommended those orange cones, I think they're called daylighting, at the intersection of Lee and Lawrence.
Correct.
And is recommending, I believe, a stop sign. So, my purpose of sending you the minutes was to let you know that your request was being acted on by the engineering office.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad you're something is being done now due to where Lieutenant Trigg, he was called to this scene. That was Saturday afternoon. That was where you had a major car accident. I would like to show, show you where you had, on Lee and Ward Street. That's the next corner, next to where you had a person get hit by a car, three car accident. The boy scoot with the scooter, that head coma thing. Now, come on, tell me that Lee, this area does not need work done immediately. What is this city going to really, what, God forbid, wait, what, wait till someone's actually killed? Do you see how the car is turned over, smashed? So, please, like I said, I hope something is done because wow, honestly, I forgot my phone at home at the time. With this, I surely would have called either Channel 7 News or Channel 12 News to show, I'm going to show you the perfect picture so you can really, some of you can really see. I see how this car is really turned upside down, being rescued. So, please, I hope you take the time to really look at these pictures, to really see. I just want all you to see what I'm saying. At this, the city, they will get the pictures. Come on, do you call that dangerous or what? Please, like I said, wow, I hate to see things like this. I know that this actor from the police department, like, wow, every time I call something, she probably wonder, wow, why did I call, why did I call so much? It just, what, the Lord is, I hate to see it happen, but I say the Lord is there to help me get pictures, to help prove and point to the city due to where, what, it takes so long. And that's why I say cities really at fault for some of these things, where I say they don't take it seriously. But like I said, after you see these pictures from Saturday, I hope you do respond soon or speak up to the traffic authority that something should be done on Lee Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anybody else up to address the council this evening?
Good evening. And Charles Prattville, New Brunswick. I wanted to just start by mentioning something else I think ought to be mentioned during the meeting is a reminder to vote in the primary if you're eligible. It's on Tuesday and the polls will be open at the usual places. And I wanted to ask the council if, you know, I mean, this presidential election is one of the most important elections in recent history. I'd like to ask the council if anybody on the council is endorsing any candidates.
Would anybody like to respond to that question? I don't think there would be anybody like to respond to that at this time.
Fair enough. I want to ask about the Wolfson Deck and the whole scandal with the parking authority. Several people have been charged criminally. Do you know, sir, if anyone at the NVPA who took bribes is still working there?
Do I know the person?
Yeah.
I do not know.
Okay, so it's possible.
I can't, I can't, I really can't respond because I really don't know.
Okay. Do you know anything about whether anyone has been fired at the authority?
No.
Do you know if anybody's lost their job as a result of this scandal?
I do not.
Okay. It's my understanding that the four people who were charged were all fired, but it was also alleged that they took, that they paid bribes to cover up what they were, you know, up to. And I'm curious if anybody on the payroll of the parking authority took those bribes and kept their job.
I don't know if that is correct. I did know that people that were, that did lose their job, I didn't know that far. But I don't know any of the other answers.
Okay. Can you tell me, can you get those answers? Can you find out?
Mr. Shami?
Well, parking authorities are...
So, have you gone to the parking authority meeting?
As a matter of fact, I did this week.
Have you asked them?
I did ask them some direct questions. I didn't exactly get answers, but now I'm going to my elected officials. And I'm asking, can you find out? Because you are the liaison to the parking authority.
Whatever we legally can find out for you, Mr. Pratt, we will find out for you.
We may personnel this issue and discuss active criminal investigations. I don't know anything about it, but to the extent that something can be released from a legal perspective, I'm sure that we'll try to gather whatever we can gather.
Whatever we were allowed to give you, we will get, we will get for you. If there's a personnel matter or something else that's involved, obviously you know that we can't bring that to your attention. But anything else, we certainly get, we'll try to get for you.
Thank you. Can you tell me, is the administration or the city council concerned? This is the second time in just a few years that people have been criminally charged for stealing at the same agency.
It's a terrible thing. You deal with cash in all walks of life. Sometimes people have a tendency to try to make their own deals when there's a cash thing involved. And it's a sad thing. It's happened twice now at the parking authority. I don't think it's any reflection on the parking authority. I still think it's a well-run, vibrant thing for the city of New Brunswick and certainly a great part of what we need to do business here in New Brunswick. But it's a shame that it happens, but you know, it's like anything else in life, you know? We can't control people's human nature. So, that's all I can say on that matter. It's unfortunate and the people that were guilty will be tried or whatever by law in that way that cookie crumbles.
I hope that's how, the cookie crumbles, but we don't know yet.
Well, that's the way, that's the way I understand it. I don't know the particulars about the place or anything.
Well, I want to shift topics because I know that the Wolfson Parking Deck closing down is actually something that concerns a lot of business owners in this area. And now that it's closed officially as of yesterday, you know, what, you know, the restaurants and everybody else are struggling in part because of the high price of parking and taking that deck out of circulation. How do you justify the policies that the parking authority has put into place? Aren't businesses right when they're saying they've been, they're being hurt by closing down the Wolfson Deck or by you raising the rates?
There's a deck right up the street that you go to Rockwell Falls. It's not that far off from where that is. There's a deck on Shirk Street. The Wolfson Deck is irreparable. It's more, it would be more money to repair it than to just knock it down. And now it's going to be used as a park, right?
They plan this to develop it into a city park. It's going to be a city park. It's in disarray, it's in disrepair, it's in disrepair, you know, it's one of the oldest decks in New Brunswick. Probably maybe the oldest, I'm not sure. But I know that it's in terrible shape and the foundation of the structure, four engineers say it's past its time. I believe there's ample parking in that area. It's a four blocks swing either way. I don't know why people will complain. We do have parking, like I said, Shirk Street Deck, you can go to the Rockwell, the Rockwell Falls Deck right there, New Street Deck. The wall ring that area right there. Yes, Mr. Pratt, would you like to respond? I'd also add that the deck that Matrix just built is open to the public also. So, that has added, I believe that's 650 spaces.
I was going to, I was going to...
Yeah, that's also available for the public.
That is correct. And the Hyatt Deck is also available to the public also. Okay. You're welcome.
Thank you. I have to ask about the, well, actually, first I want to mention that I'm broadcasting this live.
You are.
I'm broadcasting live.
You've been doing the whole meeting, it just comes out.
Yep, and...
Some people would like to put on makeup or a hair or something.
So, somebody has a question, actually. They wanted to know if, why the parking authority's adding meters in what they see as a two-hour parking zone on Somerset Street. Can you clear that up? Is the parking authority adding any meters on Somerset Street? And if so, why?
I do not know that answer at this time, sir. I mean, more than welcome to go to the parking authority meeting and ask them if there was something that comes up here or will have to come up for city council, but I don't think that's came up.
Right, that would have to come up here, right?
Mr. Blant, it comes?
Yes. As requested of the parking authority, they essentially added six meters in front of 135 up to Ronald McDonald House. That's the only impact along Somerset Street. The balance of the street remains a two-hour parking zone up till you get to the same, you'll see Peter's High School, that's still a school zone. And then I think further up in front of St. Lattes, there's a special parking district. Other than that, everything else is a two-hour parking time limit.
Thank you.
And did the council take appropriate action to make that the law under the ordinances? When was that?
I think it was, I don't know, I would say three meetings ago, but I can...
I would say that three months ago, it was three meetings.
Okay. Was there a reason for doing this?
It was the parking authority's request for the, that five or six spaces right along that stretch.
So, the parking authority wanted to suck more money out of the community and they used Four Eyes New Building as an excuse to do it. And this person says that...
That is your humble, that is your humble opinion.
Indeed it is. And he said, "We seem to be left with no room to park without paying." People who in the neighborhood have depended on those spaces, what do you have to say to them?
What do I have to say to that?
Yeah, I mean, why are you taking...
We're an urban city trying to, as many, parking is, you know, is something that we strive to help everybody out with, but this is something that the parking authority requested to add. And that's all I can say about those particular spaces at this time.
Okay. Thank you. I want to follow up about the scandal, the fire department, the investigation into abuse of the disability laws. Can you tell me, has Aflac finished their investigation? If so, what did they find?
I don't think we could comment on any of those because they are under, you said the key word there, Mr. Pratt, which is investigation.
You guys said it many months ago when I asked about it and I hope the investigation's done by now.
Sure, we ask the city attorney. Mr. Attorney?
It's my understanding that those matters are being handled by the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office. And we acted the criminal investigation. Even if we knew anything about it, we couldn't discuss. So, those matters are...
We have no comment on that at that particular time. And as Mr. Shami just said, it's being handled by the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office.
And does the city have any reason to believe there are other folks who are doing the same thing?
I don't know how to answer that, but I don't think, I don't know.
It's already been two people arrested and charged. Does the city have any reason to believe that others have done it? I mean, surely you can check out who's on disability and who's collecting and who's getting paid. Has the city done the basic due diligence to cross-check this information?
I believe we're looking into all the aspects of it right now to find that out.
And you've been doing that for how many months?
I don't have a particular time to.
Since the first guy got arrested, probably, right?
What else do you have, sir?
I'm saying, when are you going to, when are you going to have answers? This is stuff that, you know...
The investigation's going on. We don't have the answers. It's being done by the courts and the laws. What do you want? We can't.
So, the city's not doing its own investigation?
He just told you it was going to be investigated by the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office.
Well, I thought Aflac was doing it before. So, it's everybody but the city. Why doesn't the city do its own investigation?
They have jurisdiction over the investigation, which involves all of pertinent evidence and information, which we don't have any access to. So, we couldn't conduct a viable investigation because we don't have access to any of the evidence. The prosecutor's office has primary jurisdiction, it's a criminal matter, and the city couldn't conduct an investigation based upon the fact they wouldn't have any information to investigate. They can't speak to people who are being investigated by the prosecutor's office. So, that's the way it works.
Thank you, Mr. Shami. Thank you. That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
The last thing I want to ask about is the people who were overcharged, parking violations on right place. Lots of the tenants in that community were basically fleeced. They were charged double what should have been charged, assuming they had done anything wrong. Can you tell me, how did that happen and what's the city's, what's the city council going to do to make sure that doesn't happen again? Are you concerned about this?
Mr. Pratt, um, it's a time, okay. Next question, Mr. Pratt. Does anybody have any, you have to go to the housing authority. We have no knowledge of it. Oh, yes, it's Pratt. Go ahead and see there.
That happens.
I actually answered that question earlier today for Charlie. I don't know if he checked his email yet. The way I understand it, what happened with the double charging for a number of folks who parked over in that area was repeat offenders were getting hit with $50 parking fines when it should have been 25. That was brought to the parking, not the parking authority, the housing authority's attention. They looked into the system. They found it was a glitch in the system that was doing this. It's my understanding that folks who live on housing authority properties have accounts attached to their units. So, what happened was the extra $25 was credited back to all of their accounts and everybody who's inappropriately charged has had that money returned to them by this point.
Excellent. Thank you for that information.
Do you have any further reactions? Is that...
No, I think not.
Okay. I hope that doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the council this evening? Anybody else want to address the council? Anybody else want to address the council?
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Yo soy Angelica Martinez, cartelnesco al jardín de la calle True, aquí en New Brunswick.
Uh, this is Angelica, and she, uh, gardens at the Garden of Easter Park, on your back.
Este, nosotros venimos a ver, este, si nos podrían ayudar con el agua porque no, no hay agua para la planta. Sí, todos nuestros compañeros ya sembraron y nos, ya regresaremos y nos podrían ayudar.
Um, I'm, uh, we came to ask if there's anything that you could do to help us. There's no water at that garden, um, right now, and so everyone called our, well, her, um, fellow gardeners. Um, they've already planted, and then there's no water to, to our plants, so if there's anything to help expedite that.
Yes. Uh, we're looking into that, uh, right now. I was, I've been speaking to the Water Department, the Parks Department about trying to get, uh, spigot for the-
We're trying to work on that right now. Uh, our assistant administrator is speaking with the Water Department about trying to get a spigot over to that area of Easter Park.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have been dressed to council this evening? Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing no one else.
Okay.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes.